In order.
Bassing.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Gunna, Lindsay.
Here.
Stepis.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, superintendent's report. I know we talked a little bit about safety at our last board meeting. I was recently included in a series of emails from CISA-10. They have been, I think, they have looked on their email list and reached out to someone. New Vision is the name of the company that will be installing the safety film on the main entries. So now they, I was just caught up on what's going on. Their plan is to be here the week of November 26th. And then they're gonna get their measurements, they're gonna investigate the doors in the front entrances at both locations, and their estimated install time is the week of March 11th. They are the company that CISA-10 has made arrangements with, and they are basically doing the state of Wisconsin. So they're working their way down this direction. So as far as the front entrance, the security film, that's kind of our last step at both locations. That's the timeline for them. Had a successful homecoming week. Had an opportunity to talk to the students on Friday at the pep rally. I said in eight years of being here, it was the best homecoming week I've experienced. The level of participation, the level of inclusion by students in making sure classmates are all part of it. It was just a phenomenal week. And yeah, I still got toilet paper, but it still was a good week. So, you know, and the kids responded, and I also then thanked the students from the staff, from our opening day pep rally, welcoming the kids back. Just the response and the support that the students have for what's going on educationally, the different programs and things we're trying to do, the welcomes in the morning. It's been overall a very successful start to the school year, the first month's already under the bridge. And just thank the students for doing all of that. So I will come back with a couple other things as a building administrator later on. Motion to approve the minutes.
And again, there was two sets of minutes there, the one I handed out.
Second list, document. Any correction in your comments?
Stepis?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Bassing?
Yes.
Okay. Did anybody on the board receive any communications that they want to bring forward? Has there been any leaks in our new room? We've had a couple in the gym area and called the Midwest. They actually came that same day, on the day that it was raining. Were able to find the leak and had repaired the one over the gym area. We've had a couple of other ones that we have contacted. I don't know if we have a Roger question or if they've come and fixed them. If you, when you walk out here and take a left down the hallway, you'll see there's a ceiling tile missing and there's a board across there with a bucket. That's a new leak that we have not experienced prior. I believe they call it, they call it a catwalk up on the roof. So they would have to come back and take a look at that. Now, I don't know if we've picked up any water recently, but I can certainly follow up with Roger on that with all the rains we've had in the last few days. All right. They're hard ways, they get addressed right away? Yes.
Jeff, I have one, I thought helpful suggestion. The parking lot that's below the field, it's extremely dark there. And there are a number of people, of course, it was raining, walking in the roadway. And I'll be specific, Sally Kench brought this up, I thought it was a great idea. There should be light there, it's so dark. And I don't know if that would be the city or the school, but that parking lot is...
You're talking the gravel one?
Gravel one, is just not visible at all.
Ours, that's still our property, so we are responsible. We can look into what another pole would cost to put out there.
Yeah, the comment was made, of course, I went by there too. You can't see the individuals when they're walking, it's raining and dark and people were sort of, you had to be very careful and go slowly.
Was she saying on the path heading out that way or just in the parking?
Just that corner in general, and I would agree, I had the same experience.
It's a great idea. Are there any plans to blacktop that lot? Right now? No. The additional funds to do that aren't in any budget that we have. But it's certainly something we can explore. I guess it's only used during home football games, would you say that's fairly accurate? Well, now, home football games, any of the wrestling tournaments, the... Couple of basketball tournaments, the elementary school holiday program that we host here. We could blacktop everything out there and I don't, we're down for the holiday program. But certainly we can look into what it costs would be. Anybody else have anything?
Yes. I'm where at board level one at this point. I've had a few things. Unfortunately, Joelle, I should have asked you when I was in there, sorry. I've had a couple of people comment as to the number of articles in the paper that are written by Joelle. I'm assuming you don't get paid for those, do you?
Uh-uh, that's just part of me just submitting things for the school.
Okay. I also had a couple comments from people saying, you know, maybe the school board should walk down or be on a float in the parade. My comment back to them, Larry and I have talked about this, but my comment back to them was, well, I think it's more for the kids, I don't think the board needs to be there. And one of the two people said, well, it'd be nice to put a name with a face. I said, just go online. Real well, but I said, I'd bring it up. And the last thing I had is I did receive an email from Kelly. About four o'clock today. Says to the school board, President Jeff Bassing and I resign from the Middle Point School Board effective immediately as of November 1st, 2018. My permanent address will be in Illinois. I am grateful to have represented the interests of taxpayers, parents, teachers, and last but not least, students of the Middle Point School District. I'd like to thank Kelly for her service, she's been on for a year and a half. So, that opens up. I had Angie give me copies so that everybody would have a copy of our policy. Basically, we have 60 days to solicit people that would be interested in taking her position. You guys can read that. Can't decide on it tonight, of course, but I guess we just want to get it out there in the public that she has resigned and we will be taking letters of intent if there's one or 10 then we'll cross that bridge when we...
Which of the letters will?
Well, according to our policy, that was changed in 2017, they can send their considerations to Mitch.
So is the deadline 60 days or is the deadline prior to that?
Actually, I was going to kind of throw that at the board even though we aren't going to really make any decisions. I did talk to Bob on, I did catch him before he left the office, and he said there is no actual state statutes that we have to follow these, I should have wrote my notes, but I think he, I do believe it's 60 days. But if you look at our policy, it can go as long as 105 days, which I certainly wouldn't recommend. I think we should, personally, I think we should take applications until our next board meeting. Unless you guys want to do it prior to that in regards to cutting it off so that we would know before our next board meeting. I'm not quite sure, if we do have the next board meeting, we can certainly put it on the agenda. But if we have more than one person, you know, that would get a little more hairy.
I know that other school districts have gone through this rather recently. And they have the people come in for like an interview process, like an hour ahead of a regular board meeting. Just to throw that out there, because I know this is unfamiliar ground for everybody, I've seen that recently as well.
Yeah, we don't have too many vacancies ever. We had one about 25 years ago because somebody passed away, unfortunately, but...
So is this placed in the newspaper that there be a vacancy so that the public at large knows in addition to the video and?
Yeah. You know, if we have multiple, then it's certainly bringing it back to the next November board meeting and discuss what you'd like to do next.
That's what I would recommend.
Let's leave it to the president's discretion. Okay. All right. Any other communication to the board members? Okay. Did anybody sign? Mary Lee, you're the only one that signed up. I just want to caution you, don't, we don't want to use any...
Names? Yeah. Understood. Yeah, I just, I wanted to, anyway, didn't want to address the communication that I had sent all of you earlier a couple weeks ago, just regarding some concerns that I had regarding the sixth grade experience and some other families have come forward as well with these concerns over time, over many years. There are a lot more families at play in this as well. And really, we're looking at this as an opportunity to suggest policy changes and, you know, maybe improve district strategies of whole child engagement in the process of learning, and also to create better community trust and engagement. Along those lines, I think the health of any bureaucracy depends on some degree of separation between employees and their direct supervisors. And when you have familial relations there, it really doesn't create an equal opportunity for other employees to succeed in any sort of bureaucratic environment. So I'd ask that you take a look at that as well. Processes to address grievances and address in these atypical situations is kind of a, you know, talk to this person or that person or that other person, or maybe in writing, or, you know, I'm having a hard time, and all of us are, despite some highly educated people involved in this, to figure out how we're supposed to go about this and who has the full picture story and who has partial truths. So that might be, you know, something to look at as well to make it a more straightforward and logistically simple process to do that. I'd like Mitch, I know is investigating this, and I'd like a formal reporting of his investigatory findings. We have a right to that, having sparked this. And in the meantime, it would be nice if our children didn't have to survive in this culture that sort of supports, you know, abuse and harassment just by ignoring and threatening and dismissing and, you know, just sort of turning a blind eye to what's happening right within our district. You know, in the end, we're kind of learning about civil rights and discrimination firsthand, and while hands-on learning is a great opportunity, I think the theme of empathy that was used at the elementary school in the past couple of years is a better legacy that we can leave for the community. Thank you for considering these things.
I just got a question. On page three, you've got the page design, $135,000, something like that. Did that come out of the $500,000 or about the $100,000?
Page three of what? It was next back to the entrance. Some of that would have been paid for with the $60,000 grant that the state had given out school districts, and the remainder would have come out of the roof project. Larry, begin with page three, was that identified in your?
Oh, page 47.
Oh, 147. So... Do we have some chance with that breakout of $135,900? The total cost would have been $245,000, some of which came out of Fund 49. Would have been the roofing project, $109,815 was the roofing project. And then the front office area ended up coming in at a total of $135,983. And that's what, that's the one key question. Yes, and then, and $60,000 of that would have been paid for through the security grant that all school districts qualified for. Does that answer your question, Larry? So that was the entire, that was the entire cost of the front entrance, the $135,900? And you did, then you dispersed the checks to the...
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience?
Hello, everyone. I was chosen to report on how a lot of the previous homecoming went. As you guys know, there was a lot of changes this year to the homecoming, especially with the pep rally at the new location, the game at the new location, so I'm here to give a summary of how all of that went. In my opinion, and I believe, this year's homecoming was way better than past years. There was a lot more participation on everyone's behalf. A lot of the students participated way more than they have in previous years. Especially in float building, I talked to a couple of the teachers and they all said that this is the best float building we've ever had. Everyone participated, everyone got involved. And so did everyone in the pep rally held by the school, the cheerleaders. Everyone was involved and participated this year. And that's completely different than years past. I don't think that was, we've ever had that many people participate. And I talked to a couple of the teachers and we believe it's because of all the time we spent in the beginning of the year, character building and RTIs and everything. And I think that's brought the high school closer together, all the grades closer together. So I think that was a positive thing of the homecoming. The new location, I know everyone in the high school was really skeptical about it. No one wanted to leave the old traditions, they wanted to stick with the old field and things like that. But once homecoming got started, and I think after the pep rally on the field, everyone started to really enjoy it and they liked the new tradition. I think everyone's for it now in the high school, so that's a positive. I know I talked to the couple of the upperclassmen, the football players, and they like the new tunnel. They wish they can run through it instead of the court. So you might see that more often. The freshmen, they all enjoyed it too. They quote-unquote said it's better than middle school, so that's a good thing. So that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
No.
We have a student government meeting on this Wednesday. Is there anything that you'd like me to bring to the meeting or you want me to bring back from the meeting?
Do you want to mention about the leadership conference?
That's on my...
Oh, okay, because that ties into that.
Thank you.
Thanks, McKenna. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move into items for information under referendum so that Lisa can then join us. I'd like to welcome Lisa Voison from RW Baird.
I can stand, I actually can sit in the car. Please, sit right down. I just have a hard copy of my handout. I, hello, everyone, it's good to see you. I know Jeff, which, Jeff, Jeff, you were on the board when I was here in '08, believe it or not. We did a refinancing. I looked on the board, I'm like, okay, one name I recognize. So that was way back in '08 when we did some refinancing of some of your debt and we saved, I think it was like over $100,000 in interest costs because we locked in more interest rates at that time. That's gone. And you can be proud that you were, there's only 25% of the districts in the state that don't have any referendum debt, and you guys are one of them, so good job. I'm just gonna take, try to keep it at about 10 minutes, maybe 15, I'm gonna keep it short. I was on the school board in Mesquite going to our high school district, so I kind of know what it's like to be on your side of the table, listening to somebody standing up here talking maybe a foreign language. But I'm gonna try to keep it high level. And what I want to do is just really, just explain how we came up with the tax impact for the referendum. That I want you as a board to be able to understand that, so when I would get cornered in the grocery store or you, if you get cornered in the grocery store, you can answer, yes, this is how we came up with it, okay? So that's the goal. But there's some preliminary slides that I'd like to use with all districts as far as just kind of understanding tax levy, understanding mill rate, because we do talk a lot about mill rate. Okay, so maybe some of this is basic for you, just tell them the school board did. Little bit about my background, I've been at Baird for, well, I just celebrated 30 years. I started when I was 10. And I was like, who stays in the same place 30 years? I don't know, but I've been doing school finance for that long. Worked with Dodgeville, in fact, that's where I was coming from, a lot of the districts in this area. I've helped with referendums in the state of Wisconsin. I think I've done 172 facility referendums in the state. So I kind of have this down to like a, just again, just high level points, okay? So let's just start with the very first slide. Do you have any questions on Baird or me, or I know this is for many of you the first time you've seen my face? Okay, so sometimes the PowerPoint doesn't, oh, you know, maybe if you just click on it, click on the slide.
Or you download it, maybe?
Interesting, the graphic didn't show up. Anyway, you have the graphic in front of you. All I want to point out to you guys, and again, this is just from experience, understanding that there's really four components of your tax levy. The left-hand side is your revenue limit component, which is about 3.8 million, you levy a tax. And that has a red box around it because it's limited.
This is a different slide.
Yep.
There's a graphic on this that is on the bottom.
Yeah, it's just breaking out the tax levy into the four different components. And the reason why I break that always is because a lot of times, community members will get mixed up and say, you know, your revenue limit levy went up. Well, we're not talking about, we don't know what the state budget's gonna be next year. We don't know what the revenue limit formula is gonna look like. What we're talking about is that referendum debt, which has a zero in the box right now, as I mentioned before. You have no debt, okay? So that's what we're talking about. You have the energy debt also in the bottom right, EEE levy, that's energy efficiency levy. Good job, you levy, you, I believe, used F32 and you borrowed to get some energy efficiency projects done. I think it's great, it's no longer, it's written out of the law, so you can't do it anymore. So you did it when you, when you could, and I say good job. So note that energy levy because that's gonna come in the plane in just a minute, okay? So again, compliance levies, take that total tax levy, a little bit over $4 million. That's the next slide. So you divide that by the total property value of the district, and you come up with this mill rate. And so every single, all 14 referendums I'm working on for November 6th is, you know, talks about mill rate. Mill rate, you use mill rate to calculate your taxes, the community's taxes. That's how we determine really a good estimate of what your taxes are. So in your case, $12.09 was your mill rate last fall. We have an estimate for this fall, but right now it's at $12.09. The simple way to equate it to your taxes, because it's on a per thousand basis, is just to move the decimal over two on a $100,000 property. So if you have a $100,000 property, your school portion of your tax is $12.09, $1,209, okay? Easy enough? Double that if you have a $200,000 property. So again, every time you see mill rate, move decimal over two, and that's how you can calculate them, do the math on what taxes are on a $100,000 property. So the next slide, again, the graphic's not showing up, but you can see it on your bottom of page two. The mill rate is broken out into those, you know, four components. And again, that energy levy, mill rate is 43 cents. $43, $100,000. Okay? So if you go to, I always like to compare you to your neighbors. You guys are middle of the road, you're $12.09, there are three below you and three above you. And these are just neighbors, Belmont, Dodgeville, Darlington on the left, Pecatonica, Iowa Grant, and Argyle on the right. A lot of boards like to know where we fall. You guys are right in the middle. We all know Belmont's going to referendum, Dodgeville's going to referendum, Pecatonica's right now looking at facilities, Argyle's just passed, Darlington just passed. So these are all change, but this tells me that you guys are, you know, right there in the middle. And the line that you see is the state average. So you are, most of you are above state average. What I like in the next slide is it breaks that mill rate into debt. Who has debt? Look at Argyle on the right. That's their debt levy, that blue, that dark blue is their debt. That's their referendum debt. Belmont on the left has some debt as well. You guys, you guys have no debt. Most of your tax levies were operating, to operate that revenue limit that I talked about, that's most of your mill rate. You have very little debt. That light blue being Fund 80, which is community service, and there's a small line there for that 43 cents we just talked about for the energy. Makes sense? I always like to say, the districts without debt, think about what their facilities look like, but you guys have great facilities, so I can't really say that for you on Pecatonica, Iowa Grant. Think about what their facilities are like. Most districts who have really, really nice, up-to-date facilities have debt. Just it's the way of this state of Wisconsin. Okay, so that's just, again, comparing. So we're gonna go to the next, actually, can you flip to the next one? Can you flip to mill rate debt only? So this is how we came up with $1.78. It's as easy as the 43 cents that you levy for your debt payment for energy that we just talked about in 2017, increasing in 1920 to $2.21. So the, in, so I'm just pulling the debt out separate. And I do that on purpose because we don't know what's gonna happen with the revenue limit piece. The operating piece of your mill rate, this is just for your debt. It's the energy debt that we just talked about, that 43 cents on the left-hand side. And how is that gonna increase if we add on a new debt levy? Okay? So that's how we're coming up with $1.78, makes sense? It's the increase over what you were paying on the energy. And then, of course, this gets extended, it's a 20-year long. Comments, questions, makes sense?
Based on valuation staying the same?
It's actually, I think, believe we have a little bit of growth in your valuation as an estimate because you guys grew quite a bit. We just, your value just came out, you had a significant increase. So I believe we were using two...
Two.
We were using 5% for 2018 and 1% thereafter, so we were pretty conservative, if questioned. Okay, so now we go to the previous slide, which is called total mill rate. And this is what I want to point out to board because you're in a situation, because you have a couple of stars lining up, which included a TIF closure, right? And the increased value, probably an additional state aid, you're dropping quite a bit this year in 2018. So we just want to make sure that you are all aware that we're estimating right now quite a drop in your mill rate. So whereas a $100,000 property would pay $1,209 last year this fall, we're looking at $1,081. So quite a drop. We've flattened that out for the future, and then we've added on question one and question two. Those are the gray boxes. So dark gray is your debt, light gray is operating. Okay, so I didn't do the math, I didn't add it for 1920 because it's 1920. And I don't know what, you know what I mean? I don't know what those mill rates are gonna be for 1920. But you can kind of see, it is gonna be a little bit higher than we were in 15, 16. But it's come down quite a bit.
So on the refund check we got from the TIF district, that is just a one-time payment, of course?
Yep.
So is that reflected?
No.
Moving forward, no? Okay.
That's the residual funds. So when a TIF closes, they'll have extra taxes at the end of the closure. And they spread it out amongst all the municipalities, and you'll get a check, and the county will get a check, the tech college will get a check. get a check, the tech college will get a check, you know, with these residual funds. We did a Mesquite, that happened a couple times when I was on the board, and we just put it into fund balance. Now, could you use that to offset the tax levy? Absolutely. Yep, in 1920, we could think about, you know, offsetting some of that. Does that make sense?
No. The, once again, the check we're getting from the TIF, this already got, we've already had, was, how much? A little over $160,000. Okay, $160,000. So this residual fund, we will, will we get the check down the road?
So the way a TIF works is, I always explain it with Walmart. When Walmart builds a facility, they start paying taxes. But they're paying to the city, because the city put all this infrastructure in, like the roads and stuff. So for 20 years, Walmart's taxes go to the city to pay off this debt. In year 20, all of a sudden, the city says, oh, our debt's paid off, and we have this extra pot of money. That's the residual funds, like extra taxes that Walmart paid, or maybe it's interest earnings over time. It's like, at the end of the project, every municipality typically gets a check from the residual. It's a one-time, this is what we have left in the TIF fund, now it's closed, and we move on. So it's only a one-time check.
Right. But that is not carried forward through the 1920, 2021?
So maybe what you're thinking is, when the TIF closes, the value of the TIF goes back on the tax rolls? Is that what you're thinking?
No, I'm talking about the check itself.
Okay. Yeah, so it's a one-time check, we put it into fund balance.
We've already used it. We've already designated what we're gonna do with that $160,000 this year, that'll help bring our 350 deficit down.
You have that reflected in the $12.09 down to the $10.81, correct?
That is...
It doesn't actually affect the mill rate?
No, it's just kind of a one-time deposit into your fund balance for projects.
All right.
This is more of a levy. This is your taxes, how much you're asking taxpayers for. This is a tax levy.
I see what you're getting at. You anticipate that the mill rate should've dropped even more because of that $160,000.
Yeah.
But that came in after the mill rate was set first off. And then secondly, it's just the one-time deal, and we just, we put things back, we didn't cut.
That's one thing.
Yep. So yeah, there's a, I mean, again, the TIF closure really helped you in 1819, and we, you could, I'm gonna just throw this out there, board, because it's done with other districts, if you didn't wanna see that drop, you could adopt two tax levies, one if the referendum passes, and one if it doesn't. So $10.81 if it doesn't pass. And if it does pass, we could put a little bit of a tax levy in there for referendum debt, to help smooth out the peak in the valley. Does that make sense? So you could insert a dark gray bar in that 1819 year, so that you don't see as much of a drop. We do that a lot, and the year TIF closes is a great year to, like this, to fill in maybe debt repayment, or, but you don't have any debts, we can't do that, we have to, you know, use it for the new referendum. Something to think about. You don't have a lot of time, you guys are probably adopting your levy soon, but I have probably, I think, five districts right now that are adopting two levies. Hey, if the referendum passes, this is what we're gonna levy a tax for. If it fails, $10.81.
And you can do that.
Hmm?
And you can do that.
Yeah, I do boards, and you just certify two levies, you let your municipalities know if it passes, and they know. If it passes, use this levy, if it fails, $10.81. So you could, you know, we could fill it into $11.81, and it would still be a reduction, right, from year last year. But then you could start that debt repayment if you, you know, if the referendum passes. So...
Referendum, sorry. Sorry, go ahead. Just to clarify, so then that would be maybe less of a jump back up?
Yeah, exactly.
With the referendum, if the referendum passes, it would be less of an up and down roller coaster of a mill rate?
Exactly.
Okay.
If it doesn't pass, then you submit the board, and that's the one you go with, right?
Yeah. If it fails, it's $10.81, if it passes...
And is that based strictly on the referendum, the debt referendum?
Yeah.
And operational?
Can't do the debt. No, can't do the operational. In the question, it says, starting in 1920, so can't do it for operations. But we could, you know, it's something I think you should think about, because it does become challenging when you have a peak in valleys. And we can, I can walk you through how to do it. The board, we used to get together on October 31st and adopt a levy. And then we would just, you'd just adapt to, so...
Or 22nd of October.
Yeah. Okay. When you adapt on the 22nd, okay. So I'm sure Marsha can do that, I can help you guys. If you wanna go that route, you can, it's pretty straightforward. It's just filling in the line in the revenue worksheet. Okay, so I haven't said much about question two. I, question one, again, is the debt, and that's the tax impact, right now it's $1.78. Of course, if we do this little getting rid of that valley, then, you know, it's gonna lessen the impact, essentially is what it's gonna do. What we have for the 350 is, we took an average over 20 years for the 350 operational question. The reason why I picked 20 is, that's how long the debt goes on. It's gonna be a little bit more in the first year, because you're not gonna have the state aid, you get aided on this. But I think I'd be conservative all the way around, and I was pretty comfortable with that 74 number. So this is just my, I felt the house chart, so it tells you a hundred thousand dollar home. Again, it's $1.78 on the mill rate on a hundred thousand dollar home. Like I said before, it's $178 or $4.21 a month. So summary of the taxes, some of the assumptions I used, again, I have two 20-year borrowings, we can check if it changed, it can be tweaked, we can do, we can do one, we can, there's lots of options there. Four to four and a half percent is the interest rate I'm using, and right now, if you locked in, you could probably get under four, probably in the high threes, through 75. So it's not overly conservative, but it's, I'm comfortable with it now as an assumption. But again, something that board members should know, if, when asked, what interest rate are you assuming on the borrowing? That's what we're assuming. Again, you had asked about the growth of the valuation, 5% in year one, which this was before Monday, or last week Monday, when the valuations came out. So this is based on 5%, even though we know it went up higher than that. And then one thereafter. Yep. So that's, those are kind of the assumptions, kind of, those are the assumptions that we're using. Do you guys, are you comfortable with the, with that? Make sense? Okay. I threw three or four more slides in more, just for your information, because I get asked this all the time. I was just in Dodgeville, and your tax impact is only 17 cents. And I know, and yours is $1.78 plus the operating. And I'm not gonna say it's high, but it's on the high end. So this is just a list we've compiled of other districts that have gone to referendum, whether they passed or failed, and what the tax impact was. Again, just trying to put it in perspective for you guys to say, you know, $1.78 is on the high end, but there's a lot of districts that have gone for more and have passed. And again, $1.78 plus is 74, so I guess we gotta add those two together. But again, just more FYI for your back pocket. I also threw a slide in there on interest rates, because this goes back to when I started at Bear in 1988, when schools were borrowing at 7% and 8%. And now we're in that, you know, that 3% to 4% range, you really care about that top line, which is the 20-year, the blue line. And this is nationwide AAA bonds, you're not gonna be a AAA borrower because you're a minimum of West District of Wisconsin. But again, I don't really care about the rate as much as the trend is, we're still relatively low in interest rates, and they are on the rise. And then, just, again, this is school debt, light gray has passed, blue has failed, very right-hand side, there's been 40 referendum questions in, so far this year, 33 have passed. Probably our best success since I've been at Bear. So 33 out of 40 passed in April. And then there's another 40 districts that are asking for debt for facility projects in November. So we're not alone. And then the operational referendum is the last slide, and that is, again, on the very right-hand side, there's non-recurring and recurring. Do you guys know the difference between the two, right? Recurring is perpetual, non-recurring is a sunset. There's only seven recurring. Our was recurring referendums, and then there was 27 non-recurring. But even with the recurring, the seven, I think, have passed. So we had some very good success in the state of Wisconsin since April. And in November, there'll be 24 more non-recurring and 14 recurring. So districts are more and more, you know, kind of relying on the operational referendums to help balance our budget. You guys are not alone.
I've got a question for you. I read, I think it's in the School Board Magazine, that this year, there's a record number of schools going up for levy, it's the highest number ever?
I am gonna say no, but...
The number of referendum, they said, the record was 152, and I think this year, there's 156, I believe, I think I saw.
Okay, you're right. I thought there was a 200 back in 98, but I might be wrong, maybe they're going back till 2000 or something.
Could be.
But I know when two-thirds funding came in back in 98, that was the record number, because, and you guys were running nothing, you went 906, or 96, I think, or 94. But it was back in the 90s when the two-thirds funding, you know, stadium was in play, and so you're probably right.
I think that's very compliant.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big year. Any other questions? Anything I need to give you more information on?
Yeah, could you explain to the board, your fee with the 11.9 versus the 350 per year, how does that work?
So the way I've always worked for 30 years, I don't charge a fee if the referendum doesn't pass. And the only fee I would charge is on the borrowing, so the 350, I don't charge a fee on the 350. I'm helping you guys out and calculating tax impacts and that, but it's, if the referendum would pass and you borrowed money, my fee would be built into the interest rate, so it's not something that's gonna come out of your budget. It's built right into the interest rate. And I can explain how that works with premium bonds later. We went over very thoroughly some recent sales, and I wanted to be fair, and I told them it would be fair, I'm gonna be on the way, well under the average. It's gonna be a percentage of the borrowing, that's how everyone charges a fee, and it'll be, I believe it was 1.1%, and I'll be under that.
And you said it's built into the interest?
Yep, interest rate. So if you borrow at 4%, a premium bond might get you to 4.02. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not like you're borrowing at 4%, it's going up to 5%. No, it's a slight increase in the interest rate.
Only on building the referendum?
Yes. And if you fail, I'm gonna be here to help you guys through, you know, whatever the next steps are, if there are next steps. So I hate to say, if you fail, and I really don't, those words don't come out of my mouth, but I'm saying, you know, I'm gonna be here until, you know, we can have a few facilities. That's how I've always worked, and I always will continue to work.
Need a question?
Yes, with the Dodgeville proposed, what would their levy mill rate be?
So that was a big discussion tonight, I was at Dodgeville at their open public forum. Oh, and I was gonna ask, you're having an open house on Wednesday?
Correct.
Would you, do you want me there?
Sure.
Okay, 'cause I can help talk about this stuff if you, it's on my calendar, okay. So Dodgeville had, I don't know how much detail you want, but they had a drop this year because of the land issue. So they had a drop in their mill rate, and we were able to fit in the new debt, to have only an increase of 17 cents on the mill rate. So $17 for this art, toy, and Jimmy Dill, I think it is, plus they have some private donations, something like that. So it is 17 cents or $17 on the 1000. And they have double or triple the tax base. They have over double the tax base that you have, your tax base value, somewhere in that 330 million, and they were over 600 million.
It's a $12 million project, but they're only going to taxpayers for 10, based on, they got a TIF close out of 1.5 million that they apply directly to, or are going to apply directly to their...
So that would've been the residual funds that you were, we were just talking about. And then they have donations.
Donations.
Which I found out tonight, they're halfway there, so they're doing well.
Thank you.
Anything else? If anything comes up, I'll be here Wednesday, and maybe I'll see, so we'll do that. You are so welcome.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Let's go back to number one. Building on that story.
Vicky, I'll turn the floor over to Vicky.
Go first?
Yep.
All right. Middle school news. Our sixth graders on September 25th went to the Conservation Field Day, which is sponsored by the Iowa County Extension Office. They take a trip to the County Pond, which is behind Bluefield Manor. They rotate between different stations. Those stations included information on climate change, soil, butterflies, prairie land, wildlife photography, animals of Wisconsin, and this one kind of, sounds kind of scary, alien invader species, okay? It was a beautiful day to be outside, the kids had a great time, and really enjoyed it. Our seventh and eighth graders, as part of their English Language Arts class, they study Shakespeare. And October 4th, they attended the American Players Theater play, As You Like It. I think it was the Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday before, an actual actor from APT came down and talked about his career as an actor and his experience, and did some role-playing with the kids, and the kids did some role-playing, so they really enjoyed that also. And just athletic department note, the Middle Point High School football team has been nominated for the Air National Guard Team of the Week, so you have an opportunity to vote. So get out there and vote, so we win that.
How do you vote on that?
There is a link on our Facebook page, right?
I can email it to you, too.
Yeah.
No, not on Facebook.
No? Twitter?
No.
You don't have a Twitter handle? No. We'll get you the link.
None of you will.
We can, we can get your link.
I'm retired.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Angie.
Thanks for going out of order. I had a special Olympic practice tonight, so I was a little bit late getting back. But I think Mitch has a link for you. I just wanted to highlight one of the programs that our high school staff are involved in. So whenever a student turns 14, and then through the rest of their high school career, if they're in special education, we have to do transition planning. So part of that is to make sure that their goals are aligned with what they wanna do after school, and that their plans that we create for them here will help them reach that goal. And Justin Leonard is part of this program called Iowa-Lockete County Communities on Transition, which I know is really wordy, but is basically referred to as CCOT. And Mitch, could you do the link to the slideshow? Justin actually has been on this, this program for probably 10 years or so, but he actually created the website that they use. And the reason I wanted to highlight it this month was, later this month, the county, the CCOT team usually tries to do three different programs that we run for students throughout the year. And in October, we participate, and we run a program called Mentoring Day, where we take students from, all of the Iowa-Lockete County schools are invited to participate, and we go to Dodgeville for the day, and there are 50 to 60 businesses where they bring the students in, and they do job shadowing, and teach them what it would be like to do their program, what you need to have for education, what the employment rate is, you know, what they look for when they're hiring people. And it's been a really successful program, and I know Justin is a really key person in helping coordinate this program, and has been for several years. So I put the website up there for you, and you can certainly go through some of their So I, I put the website up there for you and you can certainly go through some of their last events under that Events tab. You can go see some of the things that they did last year. They'll be updating, um, this year, the minutes are open. Agencies from the County Department of Vocational Rehabilitation, A D R C, even, you know, Honean Center, any of the agency supports are involved at this meeting. So it makes a really nice link for the schools to make sure that we can hook up families and students with the agencies and get them all. I think you picked on minutes instead of events, Mitch, but. But there are pictures and everything like that up under the Events tab. So those are the, the three programs we do. Again, Mentoring Day is here in October. The Career Prep and Life Skill Day has been taking place in Darlington in the spring of the last few years. And then the Read Education and Exploration Day, which is the funnest day. If you ever want to chaperone something, we go to Governor Dodge for the day. And we work on social skills and leisure activities for the students to be able to do that. So again, thanks to Justin. I know he's heavily involved in this program and it's a great opportunity for all of our students, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At the, at the last board meeting, we talked about our new school psychologist. Some of you might have known her as Caitlin Johnson. Others might know her as Caitlin Lawrence. She is here. I asked her just to stand or come and introduce herself if you have any questions about her program. She is here tonight, so it's Caitlin. So opportunity to at least say welcome. Certainly helping us out.
I do not.
How, how does it happen that you would have an interaction? And is it students or teacher request interaction?
It can come from a student, a teacher, or a parent. Yep, and at the elementary level, I work to get into every classroom to introduce myself. At the high school, middle school level, it's a little bit different. It's a little bit awkward to just go in there and introduce myself, so. And working especially like with our special education students to get to know them, go into their rooms and be available in the hallway. Also just trying to help teachers to see my role, 'cause it's a, it's a different role with us being split. I have more availability to meet with our students and letting them know that I'm another person in addition to Andy at the middle school at least to the level.
What percentage of students would you think you ultimately will have some interaction with?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know. I, I mean, right now, like consistently, students, there are students that I'm meeting with on a consistent basis. And at the elementary school, I believe there's about seven that I meet with once a week, either individually or through group supports. And at the middle school, high school, I think it's about nine. But it's, other ones have just been as needed. That's a good question.
I, I think part of it too is, I think trying to redefine the role, you know, our counselors meet with every student to make sure that we have a plan for them and we know what they want to do and that. But really as a psychologist, it's more of a problem-solving approach. So if we have students who are struggling, they can self-identify, teachers can identify, parents can identify, and then we work with them to problem-solve their approaches. So obviously not every student has a problem that might need a problem-solving approach. So I, you know, it is a little bit more selective in that. And then the other thing Caitlin is doing is our multi-tiered systems of support, not only overseeing the academic aspect, but really introducing a lot of social-emotional supports for our students in the classroom. So I think when you say, you know, who, how many are you gonna see, it's gonna be hard because some of those social-emotional structures are going to benefit the whole class, so all of the students are gonna see those. And then others she will work on individually with students provide more targeted intervention to meet their needs. So I think it's hard to kind of project how many students there are.
Right, and I'm doing, like Angie said, a lot more of my role is consulting with teachers and creating plans for students with intensive behavior needs especially, but I'm also supporting with academic interventions as well. Something that I'm doing, like I'm also offering to teachers that I can come into the classroom. I'm doing in a third grade classroom, I'm going in and teaching zones of regulation, so helping with how we can control our emotions. At the, at the options program, we're going and we're doing a thing called Circles, where it's just kind of community building and working and being able to talk through different things with each other and be open to different ideas.
Do you ever, in a sense, advertise to students that they have an open door policy on certain hours that you're available? Just that, that dropped in some, I just haven't.
Unfortunately.
You know, emotionally it's hard sometimes for students to have, if they have a problem, to even make that step forward. So I just wondered if you have something like that in place?
Unfortunately, it's hard for me to have set times because a lot of the support that I've been giving is kind of crisis response and in the moment behavioral needs. But especially at the middle school and high school, I've just got business cards and I've been giving them those or else I've talked with them about how we can get in touch. And if I don't hear from students, I might reach out to them and say, hey, can you help out? Is this thing going? That kind of thing.
Thank you.
This is gonna be a question for Joel. Do the parents, you know, we have a full-time psychologist now, Joel, through your channels?
If they've been in attention, they should. They, Caitlin wrote a column for our newsletter that's coming out this week, so she's got that in there and it describes the role and that'll be beneficial for people.
Ninety percent. Not ninety-nine percent. Well. Thanks Caitlin. From the high school level, tomorrow's gonna be a busy day in the high school. All freshmen, sophomores will be taking an online ACT Aspire interim exam. They take the ACT Aspire in the spring of the year. This gives, it's a little bit shorter version, and will give classroom teachers an opportunity to get some test results back and help get some areas for our access time at the end of the day. We might need some interventions in certain areas on specific topics. This will give them some of those results. The juniors will be taking what's called the pre-ACT. The, the benefit of taking the pre-ACT, they take a shorter version of the ACT exam without writing. We send in their test booklets, their answer sheets. They get scored and sent back to us. And then a student can see, I, I missed question number six on the science and I can go to question number six in the test booklet and figure out what that question was. So I, they can start to look at, okay, I missed this question. I know what the right answer is. It gives teachers, kind of like the Aspire interim, we have teachers, areas that these students could use some extra help in these specific areas in math, reading, science, or English. And it provides them with more opportunity to work with the juniors to help get them better prepared for what comes next. And the seniors will be working with Mr. Paul's skill. He's going to try to grab them in groups and clusters and help them with college applications. So everybody in the high school's got something that they're doing tomorrow that is important to the next step for them as they move forward. Wednesday, we host the SWALL Leadership Conference. It rotates alphabetically. And this year is our year to host it, so we will have up to thirty students from the remaining SWALL schools showing up here Wednesday morning. We have a guest speaker lined up to talk to the kids about leadership and related topics. We are also giving the PSAT test to some of the juniors who are interested in that exam on Wednesday. The open house is at the elementary school Wednesday night, seven o'clock. Love to see any board members that are able to make it. I'll go, we have just some referendum updates from my perspective. So far, we have met with the Mineral Point Community Foundation, the elementary staff, the high school staff, Alliance Club. I met with the Mineral Point Clergy. I've met with the Gridiron Club. I've met with the Russen Club. And Matt met with the library board. And this week, I'm meeting with the Mineral Point Town Board, the Shake Rag Board. And the one I'm looking forward to the most is the ladies auxiliary. Can anticipate what kind of questions I'm gonna get asked there, but for anybody that wants to listen to me talk about both referendum questions, I'm, I'm trying to reach out and meet with anybody that has questions or wants any information that we can provide to them. That would be the building level reports. The third item I have, whoa, sorry, let me back up, let me back up. Dr. Dunne had asked for a comparison. I've given you where we were in the budget in September. And Dr. Dunn had asked for a comparison. So Marsha can run them at the end of each month, so I can give you, in November, I can give you the October comparisons. So in 2018, at the end of September, we've used basically nineteen point seven-three percent of our current budget. If I go back a year to two thousand seventeen, at this point in time, at the end of September, we used nineteen point one-six. Part of the difference, last year's dollar amount, budget amount was eleven million eight hundred. This year it's eleven million five hundred, so a little bit of the percentage plays out because there's less money to work with. But pretty close in, in basic spending through the month of September. Yep, you're welcome. Statewide testing. I've been asked to kind of compare at least to last year. What I could pull up easy enough was our last three years. So in each area, you have the Mineral Point score on the left-hand side of the cell and on the right-hand side, what the state average was. So if you look at the ACT composite back in twenty fifteen, sixteen, it was a twenty point nine from Mineral Point and a twenty point two in the state. And it would go across, in sixteen, we were at twenty-one four, in seventeen, eighteen, at twenty-one point one. Yes, sir?
Do all students take that test?
Yes, these are the three years that every student now in the state, every junior in the state takes this exam.
Okay.
So as we move out, we can have more years of comparisons, so that it will be kind of an apples-to-apples comparison. The same is true then in the forward exam. If you look, eighth, seventh, sixth, so the middle schools, the Mineral Point on the left and the state on the right. And the gold bars would be basically showing you kind of a cohort of class. So in sixth grade, in fifteen, sixteen, they were seventh graders in seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighth graders in seventeen, eighteen. So kind of where they scored. Same thing with the third, fourth, and fifth graders. That diagonal shows kind of a comparison, how they've come along and grown or what their scores have done. Mineral Point scores versus state scores. This is available, if you go to the wise-public version, you can get to this information on there as well. I got this on the private because when I, if I go to the private, then on their bar graphs, I can actually click in the bar graph and it will give me student names. It will tell me these students were here, making progress or not making progress, or proficient, or basic, or minimal. So that's, that's the difference between the public version and the private version. But, but all of this information is out on the public version.
And so you're saying the sixth grade, sorry, Doc, the sixth grade was sixty-one, for example, seventy-five point four and then fifty-two point five, is that correct?
Correct.
As they went from sixth, seventh, to eighth?
Yes.
It's interesting that they, everybody in that third year all dropped.
Yeah, yeah, and if you look both, state as well. And this is based on who's being proficient or not proficient. So it could be advanced and proficient versus basic and minimal, but yes, yeah, there's some, some strange comparisons when you look across. Part of it might be.
I'm tired of taking these tests.
It could be, it, part of it could be the, what the, the benchmarks are.
Did the cut scores change this year?
Yeah, cut scores may have changed as to what was, what score you had to get to be deemed proficient or advanced, may have changed.
So, yeah, I think you answered my question. So percentage is the, is the percentage of students in the class that got proficient or advanced?
Correct. And, and I can, I could pull that out on the private side, the secure side. But.
So only thirty-seven point nine percent of all eighth graders in Wisconsin were proficient or advanced?
In seventeen, eighteen, that is correct.
Is that, that's a combination in math and ELI, right? Or is that?
Yeah, that's math and English.
Yes, yeah, yeah, total score, okay. So that's kind of how Mineral Point is fair. The report cards, they released the state report cards. It's embargoed yet. There are some discrepancies that I'm going to try to protest on the high school level when it comes to our graduation rate. There's not much you can do at the high school. There's no growth, there's no closing the gap. But graduation rate, we're, we're not at a hundred percent. And when I went in and looked, two students are foreign exchange students and one student was, had moved away. And for some reason, that information didn't get to the DPI, so that hurt us a little bit as far as not having a hundred percent of our students recorded as being graduates. So I'm going to challenge that and ask for a correction if you may, but that, that's why they're embargoed yet because every school gets to view that and if they have a challenge somewhere, they can challenge that. But that's, school report cards will be coming out soon.
So I mean, we, we're consistently above state average.
Correct.
Which is good.
And, and, and one of the things I looked at, again, in, in, can't take this year, but so in seven years of being here, and as the ACT scores are concerned in all subsections, we have never outperformed the state in every category until this last year. Our junior class, this current senior class, outperformed the state in every subsection of the ACT and the composite. So it's the first time in English reading, the STEM, the math, the science, the writing component, we outscored the state average in all of those areas. So I know the staff wasn't, wasn't happy. They were thinking they would see that result on that composite. They were assuming with all their work and effort and how the kids worked through the boot camp and things that, that the composite would come in a little higher. And I know they were disappointed, but I was able to share that information with them. And I think they realize that, yeah, their hard work did pay off somewhere in there.
That was my question, Mitch. I know in the past couple of years, we've ramped up the preparation for ACT and I'm a little disappointed in our numbers too, looking at, and we, we declined a little bit. Your, your, your future plans for that, anything on the horizon then?
This, this pre-ACT, we're hoping because we'll get that information, they'll take the test tomorrow. We have to send it in and we should get the scores back, but that gives us a lot more direction as, as to what to do and how to best help our students, so.
So that'll take place tomorrow?
Yeah.
The ACT is in the spring, correct?
Correct, it'll be in February. The ACT is in February.
And I, I think that interim ACT Aspire planning too will help us because they give you a prediction on whether they're ready, close to ready, meeting for the ACT standards as well. So as we start building in some of these interim assessments with freshmen and sophomores and identifying earlier what they are, they're gonna be even more ready for the ACT.
So is this the first year that freshmen and sophomores are taking the Aspire test?
So the state has required that you do a summative once a year in the spring around the same time as all the other state assessments, but we're choosing to do interims as benchmarks throughout the year and that's an optional thing.
What we're doing tomorrow is a cost to the district. I've budgeted money, the high school budget, to pay for the interim assessments. And you can give them several times throughout the year. And the pre-ACT is a cost. The ACT Aspire summative assessment in the spring is paid for by the state. That's the only one they require.
And we don't get the results until the summer, so we can't do anything with them until the following school year.
But I'd also add that there's been some changes to the RTI. So some of the systems at the end of the day, and that could, I mean, it's not maybe directly related to ACT, but it's different types of supports for students that are.
It's scheduled time to offer interventions that are helpful for.
So we're, yeah, I think we're trying to build our data to know what students need to be targeted with.
I didn't pull it up on this report, but because it has student names attached to it. But we have been tracking information the last several years, running the boot camp, because we, we run the students through a full-on practice ACT and we score it. And then our students go through a boot camp. So I have Tom Stager, Terry Cool, Kristen Staver, Ben McWilliams. Do the initial instruction as far as the boot camp is concerned. Then we have Matt Austin, Cindy Maltham, Molly Appenow. Brittany Roscovius this year will be asking Jason Smith to, to help. So anybody that's run through our boot camp, we have data that shows on average, those students have picked up at least two points on their ACT score. So anybody that's run through our boot camp, we have data that shows, on average, those students have picked up at least two points on their ACT score. And I, I share with the staff, I get emails periodically from different companies, hey, we guarantee at least a two-point, maybe even a three-point increase on your ACT scores. I'm like, I'm getting that, my staff is getting that. We actually have a young lady who increased her ACT score from the pre-test to the actual exam by six points. Last year, we grouped students by their scores on the pre-test into subsections and gave specific instruction for them. We also had students who needed to leave for work release and tracked those students. Anybody that did not get through boot camp, did not see an increase on their ACT score from the pre-test. So, we feel that what the staff is doing has an added benefit.
Can you, can you clarify what exactly a boot camp is?
We have done it where students will rotate through science and get specific science instruction, you know, help, here's the questions you missed, what are they asking? What are, what are some tips and techniques to use to try to improve your score in the science area?
On the pre-ACT?
From the pre-ACT.
That's what they're gonna take tomorrow?
No, no, sorry. We give, we give them a retired ACT exam.
Oh, you said practice ACT exam. When do they take that, juniors take that?
We have given it at a variety of times. Um, last year, I believe we gave it just before Thanksgiving. Um, we've given it just before Christmas break because it takes the better part of the day, you know, I mean, we give them starting at eight, we shut the bells off, the rest of the kids in the school are fantastic. They run their normal schedule, we put them all in the gym and give them this practice ACT, so they understand. This is a sixty-minute test, and put the time up on the scoreboard and start counting it down, so they realize, okay, here's where I am. Time, okay? We, so we run them through basically a full ACT exam.
And the boot camp is run through RTI?
Yes.
Time?
Yep.
And is optional?
Uh, if they're here, it's not optional. But the students, there's some students that have work release, so they might be leaving sixth hour, and they're gone. We offer the opportunity, if they want to come back, they're part of the boot camp, but funny how when, when they're gone, they don't ever want to come back till the next morning.
So all RTI time between, what, beginning of second semester till ACT time is?
It would not be that long, it's not that long.
Okay.
We've done it in a variety of ways, where they rotate by day which sub, which subject they're in. Last year, we set it up where two, these two days, the groups that were in a, I'll say a thirteen to seventeen score on the science exam, those students met with Mr. Stager on these two days. Then the other students came, so they were getting more instruction based on what they needed. So if I was a twenty-one, what kind of help do I need to get to that twenty-three or twenty-four? If I'm a thirteen, what kind of help can I get to get to a seventeen? So they really tried to specify their instruction based on where the students were. We divided the kids up into teams, uh, gave them a, a pizza lunch for the team that had the highest growth from pre-test to ACT test. So, we, we tried to be as specific, and the pre-ACT exam should give us even more information on how to be even more specific in the instruction. So I know the staff is pretty excited about getting those results back and being able to work with the students and help them get to where they'd like to be.
Great, thank you. Are we close to the neighboring schools for the ACT composite?
I would have to, I would have to dig in and look specifically. I would, I would say we're in the ballpark, I, but I would have to. In order to give you a specific, you know, if you look at the surrounding schools.
On the report cards, right, the DPI report cards?
Um, this is a component to it, this is not the total score on the report card.
Right, but if we, if you were to look up the DPI report card of any school district, it would show their composite.
Comparison on wise-dash?
Yeah, in the public version. You're just looking at this, you look at the forward exams, and we're well ahead of the state average, and then the, again, the ACT is, is too close for me, I guess.
Well, just one thing on the forward two, and I, when we can access the results, I, I go through it and I just see what really stands out. And, uh, also, I like to put the pressure on some of my teachers too, but last year's sixth graders would obviously be this year's seventh graders, they had seventy-eight, over seventy-eight percent of them tested proficient or advanced in math. That was forty-two out of fifty-one. Okay, so that was Mrs. Silver, and now Mr. Chambers has the pressure on him, you know, to see if our seventh graders this year will be able to meet or beat that, so we'll see. But tho, those are things, like if you go through the, the results, some, some things that you can see in, in, I think even testing to that high level of advanced, we, we did an excellent job where we outperformed the state in ELA and math, and science, and, um, social studies, because Mr. Van Galen and Mr. McGrath, they need a little kudos still, so.
Thanks, that's great. Okay. Moving on to enrollment updates, um, kind of a comparison. Now, this is not, this is not what our state aid is based on. Okay, but you can see from seventeen eighteen, seven twenty-four, to this particular year, seven fifty-nine. So in your board books, if you have them, if you go to the next pages in your board book, you would see this is, this current school year, eighteen nineteen school year. You have to come all the way over to the total FTE column. So basically, our state aid is based on six hundred and eighty-eight students, full-time enrolled students. And if you look up at, uh, our four-year-olds, and we have forty-one students in, resident students in that program, but we're only getting credit for twenty-five students because we only get six tenths of a student. So for every student that shows up, you get six tenths of that student toward your student enrollment count.
But for every open-enrolled student, we get a percentage of that other district's state aid.
We get seven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars, somewhere in there, for that pupil. The hard part is, and, and I've asked this question, the hard part is, I don't know. So this is, this is the, this year's, and here is last year's enrollment. So we went from six sixty-one to six eighty-eight. So we have twenty-seven students. The hard part is, I don't know if all twenty-seven of those students are all open-enrolled. Because we did get a lot of resident enrolled, you know, people moved here and enrolled their children. And that we get all of the money for. So I won't necessarily know the breakdown of those twenty-seven additional students until we get basically our state aid, which is next Monday, we get that information next Monday on October fifteenth.
So just to clarify, so, I'm sorry.
Is an FTE all resident?
No.
It's not?
No, that, that is the, that is basically your, because you get some summer school numbers in there, and with the change in law, they don't have to be resident students to be able to come to our summer school. It's, it's the portions of, you know.
But the, the twenty-seven increase will be part of our FTE number, which is?
Yes.
What we get paid for residents.
So if you take the, if you take a conservative look at it, if you just take twenty-seven students times seventy-three hundred, that should be an increase in our state aid.
But I think Andy's question Mitch is, shouldn't it be the, the entire, or, or state aid, which is ten thousand, change?
No, because you don't get that for an open enrollment. You don't get, you don't get.
That number's not.
But they're not in the six sixty-one?
Yeah, they are.
The open enrollment?
Yeah.
The forty-three is rolled over.
This is our open-enrolled number, this is our residents that are enrolled out, and the difference.
Is the six sixty-one.
Right, so if it goes across, and the, the in and the out are?
Because we get some state aid, we get some state aid on these days.
Right.
We keep a third of that.
Well, we keep a third of our, our.
Any, any one of our students that goes out, we keep a third, just like other districts keep a third, and we get two-thirds basically of that, give, you know, give or take. But, so we have a, an increase of twenty-seven FTE, you know, because you can't look, if you looked here, it's like, then you're counting every, as they say, but in the seat for that.
But the twenty-seven applies right to the formula.
Correct.
The difference in our in versus out could tell us our surplus for open enrollment. We have those numbers too.
Well, this would be this year's.
And we have a hundred and one in and forty-six out.
So fifty-five students. Right?
Yeah.
Correct. Versus last year.
But we only have an increase of twenty-seven students from last year's FTE to this year's FTE, so I don't know where the fifty-five and the twenty-seven, how that plays out.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, I, I, because there is, there is that number, but not, it's stayed in there.
Another question I had, so, last, if you go to that middle column, residents in district?
Yeah.
That's basically kids living in the district, correct?
Correct.
Whether or not they open enroll or not, these are kids from mineral point, correct?
Should be, yes.
So, six fifty-eight this year, and it was six thirty-three last year. Correct. So, I know there's been a lot of question about whether, whether our population, whether our population of kids in the district is stable or growing or declining. This was, this would suggest that at least compared to last year, the number of kids in the district have gone up.
Correct.
Now, we can't control whether they enroll in our district or not, but the number of kids that could go to our school has gone up by twenty-five.
Yeah, so forty-six of these students are choosing to go out. But, but they're still, they were still in last year's count too, if last year's count had, was it last year's count forty-three?
Forty-three.
So.
Only up by thirty.
So there's three students that have decided to open enroll out, increase from last year, but you're right, you, you look at the increase from last year to this year, our student resident population is going up.
Because one of my questions, you know, especially with the remodel of the elementary school, you know, yes, our open enrollment is up, it is our in-district kids going down, but it, it seems like.
From last year to this year, yeah.
In-district kids are going up, at least from last year to this year.
Right.
And open enrollment's up.
When I, when I talked to Elaine, because Elaine takes care of a lot of the registration and is the open enrollment guru in the district, she, she told me she registered ninety students over the summer.
So I'm like, ninety, are you kidding me?
No, some of them, the largest, the share of that would have been the four-year-old kindergarten. She was registering every one of those. So you take that off, you're still looking at forty-seven students that would be full-time students, we would get full-time reimbursement for, one of forty-seven, anywhere between kindergarten and senior year, the senior grade. So we, to your position, yes, that's correct. Our open enrollment numbers have gone up, and our resident numbers have gone up in comparison from last year to this year. And the official will be Monday, October fifteenth, was when we'll get our official numbers.
We're still well below the sparsity.
We are well below the sparsity, yeah.
That's good.
That's good.
Because it's like seven fifteen something in the district.
Yeah, and seven sixty-five, I think is the number.
Okay.
Yeah, it was like a seven forty-five, and then it went to seven sixty-five this year.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to the approval of the budget.
You have in your board packet the proposed budget, and, again, based on not getting anything from the state until next Monday, this is our best estimate at the budget moving forward. So I don't know if you had a chance to look through it, um, if you have any questions. I know Lisa talked about the mill rate, based on the value, equalized value of three hundred and thirty-six million. At this, at the time of this calculation, the mill rate was going to be eleven thirty-five. We know that to be different moving forward. The equalized assessed value, if it comes in higher, the mill rates obviously can drop a lot lower. But this is just kind of a comparison over where it's been the last few years, back to two thousand nine-ten school year. We've had a little bit of a climb, then a little dip, then a climb, and now it's coming back down again.
Interesting, it was shown through three-six, almost three hundred and thirty-seven, but in her calculation, she's got three hundred and sixty-seven, it's thirty thousand difference.
She used five percent increase.
That's right, that's right, sorry.
She went out and pulled numbers off the internet and said, well, your, your values are going up, she goes, I'm gonna give, I'll give a five percent, you know, and.
Last, last I heard, the city was almost nine percent.
Nine?
The city. Which isn't the whole value, but the values are going up.
So if that goes up, then our mill rate comes down. The schools portion, you gotta remember that, you know. We always get blamed, but the county could increase what they tax, the tech school can increase what they tax, the city can increase what they tax, but the schools portion for the property tax bill is coming down.
But the amount, what the taxpayer is ready is not going down, the formula just changes. The taxes aren't going down.
If you have a highly valued property, if you have a property that's value went up. If your.
Our levy from last year is down two hundred and fifty thousand.
For the school portion.
Right.
For the school portion.
Right.
If your property value did not go up, then you're, in the school portion, every taxes are gonna go down. But most people's property values are going up. Right, so I think you're generally correct.
Does anybody, does anybody's property go down, I guess?
I doubt it.
I doubt it, right.
Right.
Yeah, I think.
So that's beyond our control.
Correct, yeah. Because a smaller percentage of a higher number is probably the same number, if not, if not more, depending on how high your values went up.
It would go down if we weren't existing by ourselves, though, because our levy has decreased.
So you got all those other people.
Regardless of assessed value.
All those other groups that look at, you know, like Debbie Heisner, so I don't have budgets from anywhere else, I don't know what the city's property, you know, what their tax impact's going to be. We don't know what Southwest tax, tax, tax impact will be. But if, you know, hey, if the school's going down by this much, we can afford to raise ours this much. You know, keep everything the same. That certainly could happen as well.
Well, on my side of town, my taxes are not going down at all, well, somebody's getting a share of something. My question here Mitch.
Yes.
On this budget comparison, were you using the six eighty-eight dent for full-time for the state category relief?
No. No, we were not. I think we held our enrollment left, even, from last year, in seventeen eighteen to this year.
Okay, then actual numbers, we've had a surplus.
Correct. Which we will, which we will know on, on October fifteenth, when we get all that information from the state.
Okay.
So the state category, category of aid will probably go up. That one point one six.
And I brought my financial expert with me, so Marcia, jump in my table now. We're gonna have to replace the carpet between my office and Marcia's, because I'm already wearing a pad in it.
It's a brand new carpet?
Yeah, she's locking her door now, but I still have a key to get in, so.
We should check the wall.
Speed dial, speed dial. I'm just gonna have to cut a hole in the wall so I can just yell through.
Marcia, explain to the board then, um, on the mill rate versus evaluation of property. Could you do that, Horace?
Mill rate is determined by the evaluate, the total evaluation.
Right, but when, when the city are already going down, it's not true that the taxes are coming down.
Well, our portion.
Hypothetically, for the school, they would go down if nobody else goes up. Our portion will go down.
So we, we levy a certain amount of money. Right, and so, right?
Correct.
So that amount doesn't change, but the percentage of the property value changes. Right, so let's say we need four million dollars. And if, and.
What my comment.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but so, I know what you're trying to say.
The evaluation goes up ten percent, we drop our mill rate by ten percent, please state the same.
I know, no, no, no. This is how I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, okay, so. We, we can only levy, so the, we're levying three point eight million, right?
Well, when you get your tax statement, it lists where the funds are going.
Right. That's the number.
That dollar broke out.
Right.
That's the number we set, so whatever percentage of the total property value that is, that's the mill rate. You know what I mean? So as our, if that number stays the same, to, to get this number, if value goes up, we need a less percentage to get that number.
You're exactly right, but at the end of the day, the taxpayer is checking.
Well, open the ball. Well, yes, it does.
For us it would.
For, or just the school?
For the school.
Just talking about school, but overall rate, overall tax.
To your point, it doesn't go down to the effect that the mill rate decrease would make it appear.
Right.
Because, but it would go down because we are levying less. So the value stayed the same, we're levying less, the mill rate would decrease.
But the value goes up.
Right, so the levy will drop, the, the mill rate will probably drop. So it's, it's still would decrease because we're levying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less.
And if you look.
But it would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars divided by three hundred and thirty-six million. So it would be.
Which is small.
Really tiny.
If you look at your property tax bill from twenty seventeen and your property tax bill in twenty eighteen and just compare the school amounts, it should show a decrease in the portion that the school is getting from your property tax. But you're right, it might not show, it might go up, but, but other groups, other agencies are getting that additional income. It's just that the school is the one that takes the brunt of the anger when my property taxes go up. But if there's a comparison from one year to the next, and the mill rate's coming down based on what the school is requiring, that there is a reduction in the property tax that comes to the school and you would see it on that, on that bill. It just wouldn't, the check you're writing is gonna go up because the county needs more, takes more, the city takes more, Southwest Tech takes more.
This may be more of a representative question. The, on that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar operating referendum that the school is asking for, we do not have the information of increased enrollment at that time. And looking at these numbers, I was like, I have about a two hundred thousand dollar surplus. So is that information being released during your meetings, Mitch?
Well, it can until October fifteenth, when we know for sure.
But it appears it's going to.
Right, and there will be some adjustments in the, in the budget, in this budget, there'll be adjustments in it prior to certified.
I mean, just to be transparent, even Joel, I think you should put that in, in some of your communication pamphlets that are put in open, because that's information that's new to us.
But to Mitch's point, I think you're gonna see some of that money that you think is a surplus being reallocated, is that correct Mitch?
Right.
So you won't have it.
There, there's the potential we could take some of that money and put it in to Rogers Capital Maintenance Budget that was wiped out to zero.
So that'd be, that's gonna be discussed with the board.
Exactly, and, and, and these numbers aren't finalized until we get the numbers from the state. I, I can't give you any final numbers until the state gives us the final numbers. So that's why we're certifying the levy, the actual mill rate, the actual levy on the twenty-second. You know, she used three hundred and sixty million, we used, what the state put in our revenue limit worksheet, three hundred and thirty-six million. If it comes in even higher, the mill rate drops even more. So we don't have those numbers until the state actually gives us those numbers. So to be transparent, it is, it's, it's, it's moving all the time and to be transparent, that's all I can say is that number is moving and I don't have any answers until the state gives us those answers. But we are looking at surplus. There is the potential, there is the potential for us to have a surplus, yes.
So also potential to put back some of the stuff that we cut out of that two hundred thousand that you're talking about. Because remember, we cut how many thousand?
We, we were back a hundred of that.
And the, the other point I wanna make is, you know, even if the operation referendum passes, we don't have to borrow that money. Right, so I mean.
If that were the case, yeah, where the, the school was not.
Is that up to the board?
The one point one million that we're already operating on.
You know, I mean, I, I understand that, and to, to me, those are apples and oranges. I mean, the, I think the financial situation seemed much more dire at that point. Then, you know, we're trying to be a little more proactive, I think, at this point, but I mean, if, if we end up with a surplus this year, we don't have to borrow anything for the, out of that for the next year. Your point is well taken.
We are looking at a surplus now, whereas two months ago, we didn't look as promising.
That's right, so.
We also cut three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out because we didn't have twenty-seven more FTE to justify. Cause we were looking at a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit.
But we corrected some of that.
Right, but, but, but we also, to be transparent, we need to appear like we had everything, we asked for an initial budget and we have two hundred thousand dollars left to borrow. Because we cut that two hundred thousand dollars initially.
I'm referring to our increased enrollment.
Right.
What Amy's saying is we, that's, that's maybe enough to cover what we cut this summer.
That's, that's my point, so we got, we got to zero of the cut.
And we can debate whether those cuts hurt or not, whether those cuts were, you know, whether those funds were necessary or not, we can debate that.
And if you, you know, if you come back to, I'm sorry, but you know, you have forty-four kindergartners, four K, that'll come in next year as full-time students and we're losing fifty-seven seniors. So if you just look at that, there's a drop.
In state aid.
So there's a drop in state aid, unless we pick up more open enroll or more students and families that move in to, to make up that loss. Cause I know we, you know, you've talked about two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred thousand, what about a million? And you settled on three hundred and fifty thousand going forward for an operating. That, what I'm telling people, that buys us a few more years down the road, when, when it comes to what happens. I don't have any control of who moves in, you know, we can continue doing the good work, you've got the staff that's doing their work.
What will the four-year-old look like next year or two, which that's.
Right, right, and not everybody sends their children to, to the four-year-old program. Maybe there's a few people that just kept them at home and I'll send them to kindergarten, and you don't know that. But that's, that's some of the big unknowns out there when it comes to a school budget and state fund.
And just looking at averages, it's a good year to have a small four-year, four-year-old class. And if, if we could reverse that next year, I don't know if we will or not.
Right.
Looking at the numbers from the year before that.
Right.
And last year there was, what, was there forty-seven?
The prior year. Uh, fifty-three, I think we were estimating.
Oh, on this report, we reported forty-seven.
Okay.
In September.
Yeah, yeah.
So we wanna make a motion to approve the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Second, please. Sorry? Any other questions? I will not be spoken about because of the salary gap that increased, those handout, the two thousand and three.
And to be clear, we'll, once we get the numbers, we'll review the final budget.
On the twenty-second.
Before certification.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be the first thing, you'll see, you'll see the official budget with all the numbers from the state in it, and then we'll certify the levy on the twenty-second.
And just to be clear, this budget is balanced?
It is.
Right, okay.
Any other questions, please?
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stennis.
No.
Bush.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Basting.
Yes. Approval of hiring an instructional assistant.
There is a need at the elementary school for an additional adult instructional aid in the classroom. There are, there are.
One or two.
One. There's, there's, there's a couple of children, but they're, we're looking for one adult to help support the learning environment in one particular classroom due to the disruptions that happened on a pretty regular basis. There was a day that member Stennis called me to ask me a question, and I couldn't take his phone call at that time because I was in the building. Mr. Renwick and Ms. Klein were out of the district. Ms. Ulrich was up here, her, her scheduled day was to be up here, so they called me down to help with the student. Eventually, I was relieved by Ms. Ulrich so that I could go about getting back to my building. And I think I called probably, I would say an hour, maybe an hour and a half after you first called, do you remember Larry, out that time? And there was a disruption every day in that particular classroom. So the hope is with an additional instructional aid, things can be a little bit more proactive. If there seems to be some anxiety building, this person can help escort child out the hallway, give them some tips and techniques that they're trained to provide, to help them de-escalate. It allows the instruction to continue in the classroom. There are several staff members who have shared how much of an impact it's having currently, and, and they're not really ramped up yet into the wind time and the instruction and the one-on-one intervention that's needed at this particular grade level. Angie, Caitlin, and Matt Renwick have all spent time trying to help support the classroom instruction that's going on. But again, it takes them away from the jobs that we would like them to be doing. So to your question about having a surplus, if we hired instructional aid at the starting salary and say they have qualified for family benefits, that would be within our budget. And I would only go ahead with that when we get the final budget numbers so that I know for sure. I, I would not say, I'd not make that claim now and then, yep, we're gonna hire tomorrow and then all of a sudden our budget comes in somewhere different. I, I will not put the district in that kind of a situation. Right now, we're trying to fill with a substitute in that position and trying to get the same person in to help at least build a rapport in the short term. Trying to help allow instruction to take place, isn't necessarily a long-term solution for us, but it would be about a forty thousand dollar salary and benefits package for someone coming in at a beginning wage. So I would ask that you approve hiring the instructional assistant based upon, I'll say a positive information coming from the state budget that allows us to, to incorporate that into our budget and not, not give us a deficit.
Can you talk about the, how many aides you currently have in that building and what they're doing?
There are, I believe there are six special education aides that are supporting students identified with a disability across four K through fifth grade. This would be an instructional aide that is hired for a regular education support. Neither of these students are currently students with special education needs. So they, you know, we have some, we have several students who have one-to-one support staff in order for them to be in their least restrictive environment. We have several that support classrooms as well. But I think there are six, there are eleven across the district. I think six are at the elementary and five are at the middle school, high school.
Are all six Angela through the special ed program?
Yes.
And you get funded twenty-seven cents?
We get reimbursed twenty-seven cents per dollar on that cost through state categorical aid.
And these two students are in the process of being tested?
I don't know if I can say that in open session, so.
That's not something we can talk about.
I'd be happy to answer questions in closed session if you.
Theoretically, if they were.
There's no names involved.
Right.
Theoretically, if they were, and they were deemed needing services, we would have to provide those whether we have a surplus or not.
Correct.
Okay.
And if, and if somebody were to be identified, then we go back into, at that point forward, we could get twenty-seven cents on the dollar reimbursed.
Typically, we don't assign an assistant to a child that's not in the special ed program. Is that fair to say?
I would, I would probably, I, and Marsha might have to, if she's still here, we have a four K assistant and I think she may be a regular education assistant, you know, like.
Very well be.
You know, she might be supporting a four, the four K classroom. I don't believe she's.
In your direction, right, what is, the class is entirely.
Right.
Right, now, it's not a specific student.
Right. And, and typically, you know, special education aides are assigned to support classrooms because of the student with a disability, but once they are there, they can help the classroom in whatever way is necessary. So, I mean, they don't always just help that one or two students that are in special education ones, that's their access in, but then they support anybody in the class in whatever way the teacher needs them.
That was a, a next question of mine, Angela. To get a, like an intern student out of Platteville, is that a possibility?
In this case?
In this case.
Um, right now, no, because they're all taken. So Platteville only has a graduate program in the area of special education, so most of their graduate students are already employed under an emergency license. They don't have an undergrad special education program, they have a minor. So you can graduate with Platteville with like an elementary degree with a minor in special education, or you can go to get your master's degree. And most of the people in the master's program have a full-time job and are doing it under an emergency certification, not all, but most.
Are there unemployed licensed teachers?
Oh, I'm sure there are unemployed licensed teachers and just historically from my perspective, especially when you're hiring at this point in time, you will often have teachers who are not, who have not found a permanent job looking for work as an educational assistant because it gives them more experience in the classroom for their resume. There is also a requirement that anybody who's hired now as an education assistant has to have a two-year associate's degree or two years of college training. So there is some background required in order to be licensed as an educational assistant.
Did that just start?
It just started like a year ago. So, you know, when, when, if, if you guys do advertise it, we would be including that in our job description advertisement that you do need to have two years of education or an associate's degree.
Of any kind?
Of any kind, but.
So does that take the place of that special aid?
Yeah, if you, if you do not have that, then you have to take like the ACP work keys or another test that demonstrates your knowledge of content. So the easiest way, so that we don't have to pay for them to go into the testing, is to have them have two years of schooling.
Let's make a motion, one way or another. These class numbers were on either side of the line?
Yes.
All three classes?
Yes.
And that split, the split position, they, they, they're assigned to other duties throughout the day?
Correct. There's some coaching intervention pieces that they're part of.
And that's, that's kind of a new program for us and we're gonna maintain that path.
Um, at this point in time, there's been some real benefits to that, so I would say yes. I mean, if we, if we get to a point where the budget does not allow us to do any of those kinds of things, it would be certainly something we would have to.
Sure, I understand, yeah. But there's more in place right now.
Correct.
So just to clarify, if these kids are currently being evaluated, or there's a question of whether they're being evaluated for special ed designation. If that were to be the case, we would have to hire an aide to, a special ed instructor for these. we would have to hire an aide to, a special ed instructor for these kids, is that correct? By law?
If it was in their IEP that they had an aide, they would receive the help of an assistant in the classroom, then yes, we would have no choice.
Okay. So, my understanding is that's, that's anticipated that that will need to happen, so we're just being proactive because the, the rest of the class needs to move forward and, and proceed academically and we wanna hire someone now with the anticipation that we would probably have to hire someone in the coming weeks.
Is it?
Is that?
Correct.
Fair statement?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it possible to put this on the 22nd instead of voting on an hypothetical budget situation?
I certainly can. Have, that, we would have the firm budget numbers.
And you're going to do that anyhow?
Yep, by the 22nd, you'll have the firm budget numbers, so I can certainly, you can certainly put this on that board meeting.
What, could we, could we approve a posting? And then, and then, would that help the process at all if there was some kind of application searching process and then by the time the 22nd comes around, we have a candidate ready to approve a contract should the budget allow? Or should the circumstances change?
Yeah, if you approve a posting, there's, there's still no guarantee. We're, we're just posting and trying to find the best candidate. If a position were to open up, yep, we could be proactive that way as well.
Just to be clear, just because a, a child qualifies for special ed does not mean we need to assign an assistant to that.
Correct, that's correct.
Depends on your IEP, what requirements are.
Right.
And in this case, Angela, would this child be assigned an assistant?
I don't know because that's not in my decision, that is like de facto identification, so I would have to relate to the team. But the, it always comes back to an order for them to be educated in their least restrictive environment, which is the classroom. What do they need in order to be successful there? And if the discussion from the team was that they should be in that classroom for academic and if the only way to do that would be to support them with an additional assistant, then yes. But I can't make that hypothesis right now.
And if that were the case, is it still 27%?
Yes.
Reimbursement?
State, state aid is 27% reimbursed for special education.
Dr. Dunn made a motion.
I'll move that we post a position for this assistant with consideration of finalizing a contract on, at the 22nd board meeting.
So, you'd like to second that?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Are we, we're assuming an entry level?
We're assuming an entry level and family benefits if it's an entry level and it's single, then, then that downer amount obviously is gonna come down.
Angela, a question please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stephus?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Bassing?
Yes. Okay, let's move on to DPI model, special education policies and procedures.
This is in your board bag as well, the policy committee map. And basically, what they're looking at is policy 342.1. And this would be basically the first reading of this policy. And the, and the biggest change, we took out an editorial change that potential areas that you might support CISA, other school districts. But basically, the biggest editorial change comes from the, the school district of Middle Point has adopted the model, local educational agency, special education policies and procedures from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction revised July 2018. The school district must have something in place. We can either have this model policy that came from the DPI or you get to create your own.
Which you have to send to DPI and get approval for, so I would highly recommend taking the model one.
Right, and, and this came to me from, from Angie. So, the recommendation is that we, coming out of the committee, I shouldn't speak for Dr. Lindsay, but.
No, we recommended that the doctor, the policy.
Hey Angela, just, I mean, you know this manual, you feel like it's comprehensive and gives you whatever you need to.
Yeah, I don't know a single district that doesn't use these. Every, every district that I know follows these policies and procedures and yes, it's, it is what we standard of area.
Good, thank you.
I move to approve.
Somebody like to second that?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
This is the first reading. To change the policy, correct, yep.
So, do we even have to vote to, to make the first reading?
Well, you can, you can vote to approve accepting this LEA piece and then on the second reading of the policy, then it becomes our official language.
No money, so we can just do it in place.
You certainly.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carried.
So, we're just approving a first reading of this, is that?
That is correct.
Of the policy, of policy 342.1.
Somebody like to bring a motion to approve the credit card if bill's payable and then we'll discuss it.
I'll make a motion.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, I have, replacement equipment jumped 1,000%. Went from 6,000 to 74,000. I'm just curious what that was, this is in the, maybe I'm in the wrong segment, it's in the budget question.
Yeah, you're right.
Oh, can I ask that anyway though?
Sure, sure.
I, I had that highlighted because it just seemed like an awful jump.
Can you tell me what page?
Yes, I can, 23. And he's right, and back in the budget. But that one just stuck out. Stuck out like that.
So, line 50, 561 on page 23, replacement equipment 6,500 to 74,000?
Yeah.
It may have, it may have just been a fund change because we used to, it looks like, put everything into addition, yeah, equipment purchase.
That could very well be the case, I can certainly double-check that with Marcia and get back to you, I don't, I don't have a direct answer there.
The other one's around, yeah, quite a bit, yes, sorry. Yeah, they came out about the same, that's why I wonder if that was, yeah, I just didn't understand.
I will, I will get an answer though.
Okay, thanks.
And let you know, let all board members know.
Oh, you're talking about numbers and blow, Angela?
Yeah, if you go to 551, equipment addition was 148,000 and it dropped to 64. And then, two lines down, equipment replacement went from 6,500 to 74,000. So, that's what the doctor was asking.
Okay, is there any question on the statement?
Sorry, on that I do, yeah, what is dependable solutions? It's on page 146 and the managed services were 8,000, I just, I don't know what that is.
Dependable solution is our technology providers that are support. They send out a technician on a regular basis, they maintain, they can maintain our servers and our equipment and things.
Oh, I see.
Online, and that is their monthly payment for the contract that you've been signed.
They're not cheap, are they?
No, they're not.
We had done a study in the past on, to see if it would be beneficial for, for the district to have their own IT manager. And it was even that time yet, still.
Better to have that? Because this is like 96,000 a year to have, I thought, couldn't you hire somebody?
The staff seem to be really happy with their service.
It seems like a really high one, though, isn't it?
I think it used to be 7,500 a month and now it's eight.
So, I don't know if their costs have gone up, they, they provide, they have now two staff members that are educationally minded, so they'll, they will provide training for staff where most of the dependables, dependables techs come in and the laptop's not working, the server is down, our email isn't on, the wireless, most of their staff does that, but they have two staff members now that will come and say, hey, we have these, these applications can be used on the MacBook and they'll train staff in how to use them, they'll, they'll work that way, so I don't know if their rates have gone up because of that. I do believe they have varying rates of support as well, so it could be something when the contract comes up, we could take a look at a different level of support for their services as well.
Do you know, I see, do you know what the average salary would, let's say we hired our own IT guy?
Could be.
Interesting, yeah.
Do something with the experience that could handle our, all of our issues where their entry level techs, which I think when they were here last year was 45 grand out of college, we would be good. But the server install stuff like that, which requires their high level techs.
I see.
That's where you run into, when we kind of looked at the cost analysis, tires will be capable of doing that, is where you run over.
Over what we're paying.
And it's been a few years back and, and I would be comfortable with having them come back in to explain exactly what they do.
They, I know they'd be happy to.
Sure.
Come to the board at any time and have that.
Was there, do you, I'm sorry, did you say their contract goes to bid every few years?
I know that they have different, different support rates, you know, so whether we have.
Gold, silver bonds.
Right, basically something along that line, at different dollar amounts.
Yeah. I'm sure we're even under contract with them to take the shit of that.
I can look and see if Luke has a con, a signed contract back in, in the office somewhere. But I can also invite them to come back to the board and kind of explain everything that all the services you provide us.
Maybe things have changed.
Yeah, and I, I, I like them because like for our big tournaments, our big sectional wrestling, they'll come in and get as many computers ready or laptops that we need and they'll get a printer all set up for us and.
I was gonna say, I mean, this is not a service I would go on the cheap for.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand.
But I, I would like to make sure we're getting the best deal possible.
Right, yeah, and they're the ones that, our, our servers are out of warranty and they're doing everything they can to make sure that they get us through another school year so that we can transition over to new servers this summer. You know, they maintain all of our technology here basically, so.
They're helping me out with some fixed asset inventory issues, you know, just reviewing it today, they've got a inventory program that they're creating called Invent Tech and so they're organizing every piece of whatever it is, server, device, computer, and they know what room it's in, if it's a student, if it's a teacher, if it's admin, who's using it, manufacturer date, serial number, they've got that all kind of.
Sounds like they're helpful.
Yeah, so yeah, Johnson and Locke calls while seeing that information, has fixed assets, I'm like.
That's good.
So, they're being very helpful with that too, so.
And I go back, I would go back. Probably my first or second year here, we had somebody on staff and, you know, and the printer doesn't work, my, my computer is, we didn't, that, that person wasn't enough to get around to everything that we needed them to do. And said, I, I can't do the job that you need me to do, you know, because of the size and, and you think where we've come technology-wise since then, but no, they'd be more than happy to come back to a board meeting and just kind of talk about their services and answer questions.
It sounds like this is a flat fee?
I believe so.
No matter how much we use them or how many times we call them and that kind of thing?
Yeah, because I think they're, and this may be the top, the, you know, a lower one might be, you know, we'll provide X number of hours onsite and then one down is obviously less hours or whatever, where you don't get the level of support.
Yeah, I think they guarantee so many hours of boots on the ground here in the building plus whatever support they might be able to give offsite.
You know, with Rachel, we had some kids bypassing filters and she contacted somebody higher up than her and they plumped them, you know. So, it's like, if she can't fix it in-house, she goes, and they have somebody that can.
Right.
And it's, it's good, because the kids are, are smart. There's a hole, they're gonna find it and they can patch it, so.
We had a new photographer that needed to do the programming so we can put the pictures of the kids on the Skyward, so we scheduled an appointment for them to put the software on, but the firewall defended them from installing it, so we just made the appointment for Rachel to be here the same time as the photographer lady and, and that worked for her to, work for her to get that software installed.
Rachel was the dependable solutions.
One of their technicals.
Yeah, she's one of our tests.
So, we would probably need more than.
Sounds like.
I have a question on the elementary site evaluation, what was that for?
Is that a?
Families and schools together?
That, that comes, that's the FAST program and it comes out of FundaGee.
Okay.
And that's, it's basically families and schools together, it's reaching out to families that need some support.
That was, yeah, I know that, okay.
I just didn't know if you, yeah.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Did you look over one of the expenditures which are out of month?
Yes, they come, they come through, the staff member inputs it in a Skyward, it goes to a building level administrator, it goes to Marcia, then it comes to me.
Okay.
Then what happens if they exceed their credit limit, like Amanda Heinzner, hers is 5,000, it came to 5,900? Is that, I'm just curious if you exceed your credit limit?
They just go after somebody else.
I just noticed hers was over that limit, it's on page 144.
Okay, oh, credit card, you're talking about credit card now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Then it, then it looks at the total amount of credit available, so if there is that.
So, it's subtracted somewhere else.
Yeah, they would get, they would get some, some money from somewhere else.
Gotcha.
And I'm looking at hers and, and I'm assuming, as I look at everything, replacement this, replacement that, this will be going to our insurance company EMC, kind of relating back to the whole issue that they had and all the equipment, they have to get rid of and replace.
Oh, gotcha.
So, that will be going to EMC here.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks.
Any else?
And some of that credit dock might have been applied to the credit that Marcia was able to pull from.
Yeah, for the points.
Could have offset that.
True.
Another question please.
Sorry. Chambers?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stephus?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Bassing?
6:30 work for everybody, if you want to stay that time.
12:20, is it?
Yep, so two weeks from tonight.
And he's gonna double include the assistant.
The assistant and it will have the actual budget, yep.
I just, I just want to mention, I just want to mention also, just throw it out there that election time will be, since we are looking for someone to replace a vacancy, December 21st is the filing deadline for non-hedonistic, for those that are of four. December 21st, by P.
And just to say thank you, it is Wisconsin's school. And just to say thank you, it is Wisconsin's School Board Recognition Week. A thankless job, you know, giving up hours and evenings and late nights and board meetings that go to midnight and committee meetings, everything else. And just a thank you for what you do for all the students and community members. Very much appreciated.
Do you have any motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Thank you all in favor.
I think it's gonna record.